Guys.
Matt?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The board is an elected unpaid group of ten citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We're always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under new under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The board reserves a right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We hope that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As required under the Open Public Meeting Act and JSA 1046, as sequentia adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk Princeton Packet and the Times on January sixth, two thousand twenty-two. It was distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The board reserves a right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy twenty-two thirty recording devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being livestreamed. Public members who wish to make comment at the appropriate time, as noted in the agenda or added by the presiding officer, shall raise their hand virtually at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Once called upon, the member of the public will be requested to unmute themselves by clicking the mute button at the bottom of the Zoom screen. The representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools, as more specifically designated in NJSA eighteen-eight thirty-eight, eight-point-one. In event this statute is amended, the law shall take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions for the high school, central administrative, and district-wide staff only votes otherwise are considered abstentions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bolden. Would you call the role, please?
Yes, Daphne Kendall.
Here.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Present.
Betsy Baglia.
Here.
Beth Baron. Debbie Bronfeld.
Here.
Jean Durbin.
Present.
Mara Franceschi. Ryan McDonald.
Present.
Susan Cantor.
Here.
Robert Christopher.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bolden. Item D one. Could we get a motion for the adoption of the minutes for February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two? Jean, first. Second, Debbie.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Yes.
Betsy Baglia.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Jean Durbin.
Yes.
Ryan McDonald.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Robert Christopher.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bolden. Could I get a motion for adoption of the minutes for March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two? Betsy, second. Jean. Okay, Mr. Bolden.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Yes.
Betsy Baglia.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Jean Durbin.
Yes.
Ryan McDonald.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Rob Christopher.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bolden. We're going to move to item E one, Student Board Members Report with Ned Erickson and Christian. Please, gentlemen, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We often talk about what has been going on at PHS, both what we want to celebrate, but also what we think can be changed. In this meeting, though, we want to switch it up a little bit and talk about Mr. Schmeele, our principal.
The first time I met Mr. Schmeele last May, I remember remarking on how he was entering the job with such a refreshing humility. He never acts like he's above students. He leads by example and is always willing to listen. After seeing large turnover in administration at both the high school and district levels, and coming out of a multi-year pandemic which turned education on its head, Mr. Schmeele provides PHS and its students with the stability and structure we need. His policies are grounded in reality and reason. And whenever there are changes in the school, he respects students enough to explain the reasoning behind these changes. Of course, he makes mistakes, but he also always fixes those mistakes and reflects deeply on them to learn from them and not repeat them.
I think we speak for all students in saying that we greatly appreciate everything that Mr. Schmeele has done for us, starting with his walking back Tigers event at the start of the school year to helping promote Asian Fest last week, to also celebrating Black History Month throughout the school. He has worked tirelessly and we don't use that word lightly to foster warmth and openness within the school. I remember the first week of school, eating lunch outside and seeing Mr. Schmeele go to every single student out on the front lawn to introduce himself and ask them for their names. When he got to my group, one of my friends was absolutely shocked. They had never expected such personalized attention from a principal. And what's more, he remembered every person's name. You'll see him walking down the hallway, greeting every single student he passes by by name. This is something that just goes such a long way, knowing that there's somebody who cares about you and someone who's fighting for you in the administration means a lot for the PHS student body. And as seniors especially, Ned and I, none of the administrators at PHS in our freshman year are here anymore. And Mr. Schmeele's constant presence in the hallway, talking to students and listening to our voices, has felt incredibly stabilizing and incredibly reassuring.
Seeing him balance the interests of the multitude of stakeholders in this community is impressive. His job isn't easy, but he works successfully to recognize everyone at this school, whether it be academic achievers or the athletic stars or the students who have never before been recognized for their achievements. He works to make sure that nobody gets forgotten, both within the student body and the faculty. Mr. Schmeele has demonstrated a commitment to equity, not just in rhetoric, but in real-world action. His energy is truly unmatched and his passion for the PHS community is contagious. I can't imagine a better principal for this school, and I think my classmates will back me up on that. So, thank you, Mr. Schmeele. The student body does appreciate everything you do for us.
Okay, thank you so much, Chris and Ned, for that very eloquent speech. We appreciate it. So now we're going to be moving on to the president's comments, and I just have a few things to share. Bear with me. The first thing tonight, a little unorthodox, but because of another meeting in town, we will be stopping whatever we're doing at eight fifteen to have a brief presentation about math. That presentation will last from eight fifteen to eight thirty, and at eight thirty, it will conclude. And Dr. Foster will be speaking, Ms. Tidwell, and this is something that we plan on doing going forward at every meeting to talk about math, given how important it is in our district. I wanted to share a couple of things that have been going on in the district today. Princeton Public Schools received a visit from the United States Department of Education for our innovative use of American Rescue Plan funds to support a wide variety of programs and resources. PPS, and this initiative was led by Valerie Ulrich, who, if we could all give a hand, she really did a wonderful job. The Department of Education has been visiting five schools throughout the country on this tour. Princeton was one of two in New Jersey and one of five in the country. So really, some of the things we did were outstanding and exceptional. It's thanks to Valerie's leadership. So we're very lucky to have her in that role. Princeton Public Schools used the money to bring students back to school to address mental health issues, learning needs, and to plan for the future of student-centered instruction. So this morning, we were joined by Deputy, U.S. Department of Education Deputy Secretary Cindy Martin and her team. They came to see firsthand our programs and to speak to teachers and administrators about how the district used the American Rescue Plan funds. Secretary Martin was joined by Jordan Schiff, Assistant Commissioner of the New Jersey Department of Education. They went to Princeton High School. And they saw a science class taught by James Smirk with an emphasis on problem-based learning. They visited the PHS Studio Band, discussed the challenges and successes of arts continuation during a pandemic. They visited the counseling suite to learn about the partnership we have with Corner House, designed to address student mental health concerns. And they also visited Johnson Park to visit two early childhood classrooms where funds from the American Rescue Plan support high-quality transitions for young students, as well as co-teaching classrooms where funds support professional development in this innovative pedagogy. Co-teaching involves pairing Gen Ed and specialized teachers to create an inclusive environment for all students, and that is one of the top priorities of our board. So I just want to take a moment to highlight that things that are happening in Princeton are being noticed and highlighted on a national level. So I just wanted, again, to congratulate Valerie Ulrich, Mr. Bolden, who helped with all the funding and everyone else in our administration, who just makes us very proud to have them as part of our district and very proud to be leading a district that is so innovative. So thank you, everybody. We should be really proud. The next item I wanted to mention just really quickly was winter sports have ended. And I did, Mr. Bolden was kind enough to ask Mr. Dubinsky for some highlights, and he gave me five pages, single-spaced front and back. So I'm just going to go through very quickly. And I just wanted to highlight on the boys' basketball team. They had a tough season, but Jackson Patron, senior back Jackson Patron and Chris Winaldi were selected as members of the All CVC team, which is great. The girls' basketball team earned the thirteenth seed in the Central Jersey Group Four bracket. Fencing, the boys' fencing team had a phenomenal postseason. They qualified for the NJSIAA state tournament, made it to the Sweet Sixteen, and won their first-round matchup. The girls' fencing. Okay, the girl. Okay, we had Shira Kuhn qualified for the state individual championship in Girl Saber and placed thirty-fifth in the state. And according to Mr. Dubinsky, this has been the best season yet for the PHS Girls' Fencing Team, and so we're all very proud of you. If, just briefly, the ice hockey team had a very capable season. Defense remained shorthanded. I think the boys, the hockey team had a successful season. They won three of the last five games, and they gained the number-one seed in the Mercer County Tournament. The squad outscored their opponent sixteen to six in the first two games, but came up short against Notre Dame High School. Girls' Ice Hockey finished the season with a record of four, five, and one. The players enjoyed an amazing senior night celebration against the Westphal High School, which resulted in the girls' Ice Hockey Team's strongest win to date, twelve to one. Individual accomplishments include Grace Reback being voted to receive the Harry Roland Miller Sportsmanship Award. Freshman Cece Gibb was voted to the All Wilma All-Star Team with a season high of twenty points. Grace Reback, Erin Keesweater, and Tessa Solville Billy were all selected to make the Wilma All Academic Team and all maintained GPAs over four while also being excellent student athletes. So way to go, girls. And wrapping it up, our swimming team had a great phenomenal season. The girls went to the Mercer County Tournament and the NJI SIAA State Tournament as well. The girls team qualified fourth, and they hope to be back next year. The boys' swim team had a tremendous amount of success, and they went undefeated in Mercer County and ultimately fell to Chatham High School in the NJSIAA Group B State Championship. And the boys' team was ranked number one in the Central Jersey Group B section. Winter Winter Track Boys and Girls, the Boys and Girls Track Teams had a stellar season highlighted by five athletes qualifying for the NJSIAA Meet of Champions. Kendall Williamson reached the Meet of Championships in the fifty-five-meter dash and two-hundred-meter dash. Zach De La Raca qualified in the two-hundred-meter dash. Adam Metaxas, Sawyer, Qualan, and Peyton Reynolds also qualified in the field events. Reynolds was also the NJSIAA sectional champion in the girls' pole vault. On the distance side, Andrew Kenny and Addison Moto led the way for the boys, qualified for both Eastern and Nationals, and Junior Robin Roth led the way for the girls, competing at Easterns in the two-mile. Finally, Coach, finally, is wrestling. The PH Wrestling Team had an exceptional team. The team this past season, the wrestling team placed second in the Mustang Invitational, find host team Clifton in the fourth in the Mercer County Tournament, while placing nine wrestlers in the top six. Princeton qualified for the Central Jersey Group Four Team State Tournament this season, losing a brick in the first round. And during these past three seasons, Princeton High School has had a few more wrestlers advance to the state tournament and win a state title in each season. So how about a big round of applause for our student athletes? We're very proud of you. Thank you for representing Princeton with grace and dignity. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Kelly.
Thank you. Thank you so much for President Kendall. Good evening, everyone. How are you? I have several things on the superintendent's report this evening. I'd like to highlight first, on tonight's agenda, I am asking the board to approve several updates to this school year calendar. There are three changes to the calendar for the school year that I'm asking for your approval. One is, I'd like to note that we are recommending the Princeton High School graduation to take place on June twentieth, which currently is our last day of school, and for graduation to take place at five-thirty PM. The second change to our calendar is we had on a few Fridays ago a water main break that impacted Johnson Park School. They were unable to do school, and we do need to make up that day for our students and staff. So we are recommending June seventh as a makeup day for Johnson Park only. It will still remain a day for all other schools to be closed so that the staff can have their staff development day. And for our Johnson Park staff, their staff development day would take place on June twenty-first. June seventh for Johnson Park would be an early dismissal day of one o'clock. And then finally, we've been talking a lot, as we should, about the social-emotional needs of our students. But there are also social-emotional needs for our staff. So we would like to recommend that on May twenty-seventh that we have an early dismissal day for all of our students in all of our schools so that the afternoon, our school leaders and departmental leaders can plan opportunities for staff on their choice, something that would address their social-emotional needs. So those are the three recommendations for the calendar update. Also would like to point out some health and safety updates, and I've asked Mickey Crisafilli if she would take the mic as we're planning ahead to spring break.
Thank you, Carol. I think everybody is in the same boat. We're all kind of holding our breath related to COVID right now and this new variant. So I thought it would kind of do a little, you know, look globally and then as far as where we are right now and what we need everybody to help us with with spring break. So we're watching our numbers very closely. We know we're looking at the CDC status, and we know we're in the green. We know for the COVID activity level or the Cali level in the state, we're still at moderate, but we're at the low end of moderate, and we're watching that number. It has stayed pretty consistent. So we're looking at that. We're also looking at the COVID numbers in the community. And, you know, if you look at the Princeton Newsletter, you know, on Monday, they published last week, there were twenty-seven cases. The week before, there were sixteen, so a little uptick there. And then we're watching our cases in our school district. So since the week of February twelfth, which is the first week after winter break that we started to see a decline in cases, we pretty much stayed steady, six, seven cases a week. Right now, I think we're at five for this week, and it's only Tuesday, so we're watching what the rest of the week will bring. We did have a low the week of March fifth of only three cases, but then we went back up to that six or seven. So we're watching everything closely, and we, I think we're all feeling a little sigh of relief that once we went to mask optional, we did not see a big upsurge in cases. So as we go into spring break, we want to make sure that we continue those cases to be low. After spring break, we're hoping they stay low, and then we can also look at additional mitigation measures that we may be able to step back from. So we do want to make sure all of our staff and our families know we are continuing to be consistent in following the New Jersey Department of Health guidance for travel. So if you are vaccinated for COVID and you travel outside of the tri-state area, so outside of the New York, Pennsylvania, and Delaware area, and you're vaccinated, so it could be international, you do not need to quarantine upon return. If you are not vaccinated, you need to test three to five days upon return and then quarantine for five days. So we want our families to think about that. If you have children who are unvaccinated, students at the school or even our staff, you have to plan on that because we need people to cooperate with the quarantine so that we can ensure that our schools stay safe once we return from spring break, and we keep those numbers down. So thank you all for all of your work so far. Everybody has worked very hard, and I think it's paid off. We've really been able to keep our schools open. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Mickey. I'm going to turn the mic over next to Performance Fact. I'm really excited and thank the board and the community for their support. The district is moving toward updating our strategic plan, so we do have Performance Fact with us this evening by way of Lauren. Lauren, are you here?
I am here.
Okay, so I'm going to turn the floor over to you if you would like to give the board and the community an overview of the process that we are about to undertake.
That's wonderful. Good evening. It's lovely to meet you. My name is Lauren Klafke, and I'm a Senior Associate with Performance Fact, and I'm excited to share with you the process that we're going to be engaging in to work on the update to the strategic plan. And let me go begin by sharing my screen. And is that viewable to everybody here? Let me get into slideshow mode. You see it as a slideshow? Great, awesome. Thank you. I'm pleased to be joining you tonight. I send Mu Tio Fag Bay, who's our president and CEO, sends his regards. He had a family emergency and had to step away, but he's excited, as am I, to be kicking off the planning process in person in a couple of weeks. First, just a little bit about us. We see our primary role as a facilitator, as a process. We are here to guide and to really help you envision the future that you want for the young people in your community. And so how do we do that? We do that by focusing in on aligning kind of our perspective, our external perspective with your internal vision for the students, schools, and community. We'd like to share just a brief bit about our stance and who we are upfront, and we call it a little bit of our propaganda. At Performance Fact, we see a key premise in our work is that we believe all students will learn at high levels when instruction meets their needs. And what a student has not yet learned well is something that he or she has not yet been taught well. And so really, student learning and the outcomes that we're getting are in effect, whose cause lies in the quality and effectiveness of the educational practices, of the adult practices. And so when we think about how we want improved outcomes for students, the starting point is a continuous improvement of teaching practices, leadership practices, and organizational practices. And because those are the precursor to the foundation of student learning. And so why do we plan? The primary purpose of planning is to come into alignment. Alignment, misalignment isn't bad. It happens all the time. Our cars get misaligned, our backs get misaligned, we need to go to the chiropractor. But the process that we engage in is really critical to be helping all of the people, programs, structures get on the same page, moving in the same direction. And that is the primary purpose of developing the strategic plan. You'll notice that the arrows on the left, the arrows on the right, the arrows don't change their shapes or sizes. They have their individual perspectives or orientations, but by coming together and looking clearly at the goals and the direction we're going, we hope to support the community and achieving its ambitious goals for all students. Finally, our last bit of framing around the work, we talk about the importance of having equitable access that will ensure equal outcomes for all students. Equitable access to resources, opportunities that guarantee that every child will have fair, just, and affirming experiences so that they can achieve equal outcomes for every student without exception. And so those are the key principles that guide our work, and we like to share those upfront and make sure that everybody's aware. How do we get there, right? What is the process for coming to the strategic plan? We begin with data, and we begin with the question of like, what data, what information do we have? From there, we move into what we call analysis and discovery. And we ask the questions, well, what does the data say? What does this tell us? And why? Like, why does the data look this way? And from there, we transition into the solution, and the solution is really where it's the plan itself. It's what are we going to do about it? And so we will be kicking off the process, starting with students and student data, both thinking about the more quantitative outcome data, access data, but also we'll have student survey data and focus groups of students to get their perspectives on the quality and of the quality of their experiences in education. So what do we do with all that? From there, we set the plan in motion, and we always start the plan with student learning at the center. And we talk about this keeping the proper, keeping ends and means in proper sequence. The ultimate ends of your plan is going to be about students. The second piece or component in thinking about the plan is the instructional effectiveness. So how are we supporting the development of the instructional effectiveness of the system? And then finally, we talk about what are all, what is all the infrastructure that's necessary to support the attainment of the goals and the effectiveness of instruction? And so through the process, we will be beginning, looking at both principles of equity, a portrait of a graduate, revisiting mission, vision, core values, setting goals with explicit measures. And then through the process, also having performance targets and benchmarks all around student learning and student goals. From there, we move on to instructional effectiveness, where we identify the practices, the strategies, and a robust analysis of the core instructional system to make sure that we can bring it into alignment towards the goals that the team establishes. And then finally, we look at what are the necessary supports and services, resource allocation, leadership implementation that will be necessary to bring the plan to fruition. The method that we use to go through this is by embracing the diverse voices and perspectives of the community. We begin with students and student voice, but we want to make sure that all of the voices are represented in our process. And we believe that having meaningful engagement is what strengthens not only the understanding of the plan, appreciation of the plan, but also the commitment to the plan and the execution of the plan at all levels, from students to community organizations and everything in between. So how do we embrace diverse voices? We have a series of teams that we employ in the set. At the center of the hub, the spoke of the wheel, is this, the core planning team. And the core planning team is the team that has representation from all of those diverse stakeholders that we shared on the previous slide. And that's the team that really focuses in on shepherding the process all the way through. I'm engaging in the data, the analysis, the meaning-making, and then ultimately proposing the strategic plan components. But we have three other essential components. Those are the ones in the orange color. There's an instructional focus team, which is comprised of teachers and instructional leaders across the system. And we have that team really mostly dialed in to the core instructional elements of the plan and the program. We believe that folks that are closest to instruction are the ones who are best situated to be making the recommendations for Path Forward. We also have our student voice team and elements that we mentioned earlier. That's both the survey, but then also the focus groups that we'll be conducting. And then finally, the required community forums, and that's where the community has an opportunity, not when it's the plan is done and not when it's polished, but midway through in process to be able to provide specific input and help make sure we have a reality check, so that none of the teams are getting too far ahead of each other without continual feedback and engagement from the community. There are several other teams that are involved, whether it's taking it out to every campus and district, principals, administrators, alignment team, and so on and so forth. So those are the key components and the process with which we are going to undertake the work. I'll share a couple of pieces, which is that we've already sent out we've already sent out and you've already had your community engaged in both a parent survey and a community survey. We have just over 900 respondents thus far from parents and just over 100 respondents from community members who don't currently have children in the system. And we're set to have the student survey launch on April 4th, I believe. Yeah, so it's going to be going that week. So we're really excited to get those pieces in motion. And I'm happy to take any questions, but I'm really looking forward to being there in just a couple of weeks along with my team to be kicking off the work.
Thank you so much for that, Lauren. Are there any questions from the board before I continue my report?
I was just going to ask one question. Lauren, thank you very much for that. With regard to the student survey, is that going to be administered at a time when we can get the maximum number of participate, maximum participation from students?
Yeah, so I might have Dr. Kelly or our team talk specifically about the timeframe, but it will be open from the 4th until the 7th. So it will be over the course of the week.
Right. I'll ask Dr. Foster to speak to that because I know she's been in touch directly with the building principals.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. We are excited to have that student voice component because we think it's so important to the process. Each building principal is organizing time during the instructional day for students to take the survey. We have posted the survey for parents to review and parents can choose to opt out. We are keeping a list, so we'll make sure, you know, we communicate that. But, you know, to maximize student voice, we're going to be using the instructional day.
Thank you.
And I think Dr. Foster and Elizabeth Collier have worked with Performance Fact to provide the survey in both English and Spanish so that students can choose their preference. All right. Any other questions for Lauren before she bids adieu?
Susan has one question.
Okay.
Wondering what ages, you know, are we doing, giving this the survey in the middle school? And are we collecting data from elementary school students, even though obviously their voices might be a little different?
Yes, we are. I believe the survey is for students in grades three through 12.
That is correct, yeah. And we will also have a elementary school focus group.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, Lauren.
Thank you so much.
Please give Mu Tio our regards and we look forward to seeing you in April.
Take care.
Take care. Okay, so the final part of my superintendent's report for this evening is one of the action items. I'm sorry, I believe it's on the consent agenda, is the hiring of Kim Two. So as superintendent and a woman of color, I recognize and am very sensitive to the importance of representation for all of our students. Therefore, I remain committed to equity and inclusion and staffing Princeton Public Schools. In our recent search for an assistant superintendent, we had the help of an executive search firm, H Y A Associates, which has a proven track record and does a thorough vetting of candidates. The team that ultimately selected our new assistant superintendent was encouraged when ranking candidates to give priority to diversity and candidates with internal knowledge. But ultimately, they were asked to recommend the best overall candidate for our school's students and Princeton families. Tonight, I am very proud to recommend Dr. Kim Two as our choice for assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction. Dr. Two was chosen following an exhaustive national search, conducted independently and included priority support for internal candidates. Dr. Two surpassed all other candidates due her fat, due to her vast experience and success as assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction at nearby Robbinsville, New Jersey for the past seven years. During her tenure in Robbinsville, Dr. Two was known for helping to redefine the district's vision and mission for her leadership and curriculum, as well as for her achievements relating to diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives. Prior to serving as the assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction, Dr. Two served as the K eight supervisor of curriculum and professional development, also in Robbinsville. And from 2006 to 2014, she was a sixth grade social studies teacher in the West Windsor Plainsboro School District. Dr. Two has a Bachelor of Arts in History and Secondary Education from the College of New Jersey. She has a Master's of Arts in Educational Administration from Rider University. And she holds a Doctorate of Education and Teacher Leadership from Rutgers University. I cannot promise that everyone will be pleased with every hire I make as superintendent. But I can assure you that every process will be fair and conducted with students and Princeton staff and families in mind. I simply ask each of you to welcome any new Princeton team member and afford them the opportunity that all of us deserve, a fair chance to earn your trust and respect. So this evening, I have invited Dr. Two to come and say a few words to the board and also to in advance, welcome her to the team.
Good evening, everyone. It's so nice to see all of you and thank you for having me at your board meeting. I just want to say a few words and thank you, Dr. Kelly and the Princeton team and the board members for this opportunity and warm welcome. I'm thrilled to be joining Princeton Public Schools. Princeton is a phenomenal district. It's student centered, it's innovative, and it's dedicated to promoting equity, inclusion and belonging. And I'm also really eager to assist with the upcoming strategic planning and help the district set a course for post pandemic education in life. Your educational value so closely aligned with my own and I can't wait to begin cultivating relationships with our students, our staff, our families and our community members. And lastly, I'm really familiar with Princeton community because I live in Pennington and many of my weekends are spent in downtown Princeton with my husband and daughter. We do swim lessons at the Y and funnily enough, and I shared this with the interview committee, I met my husband outside of Small World Coffee. So for that alone, Princeton will always be near and dear to my heart. So once again, thank you for having me tonight and I really look forward to partnering with you all.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll turn it back over to you, Board President.
Thanks, Dr. Kelly. So we will move right along to the fall to 2021 Start Strong presentation and Dr. Foster, are you leading that?
Yes, and I'm I'm looking at the time, Daphna. Yes, it's eight 10. So I don't know. You know, we can certainly start the presentation, but it will be more than five minutes.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, Kathy, because I, Dr. Foster, I completely lost track of time already. Do we want to?
You do the committee reports because we can always just stop.
Okay, let's do that for five minutes. Okay, so we're gonna jump around a little bit. Where are the committee reports? Board Committee Highlights, L1, and we will start with the Equity Committee. Betsy Bagley, O. Debbie Bronfeld, Chairs.
Thank you. I will jump in. I will be very brief this evening. The Equity Committee met last Monday, March 21st. We received a six month status report from members of the National Equity Project who are assisting our district as part of the Bell Network, the the district's participating in a two year National Equity Project program. We also heard from Dr. Kelly and several staff members about the circle teams that have been focused on building capacity for dealing with complex issues in our district. We look for, we we also heard about pilot surveys going out to our staff. And we look forward to another status report in the fall of this really important program. Our next Equity Committee meeting will be on Monday, April 18th at 7:00 PM on Zoom and you can look for that agenda. That's right after spring break, so we will have that up for for all of you by that morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Betsy. Is anyone doing Beth's long term planning report? Community report? No. Okay, so we'll move on to operations with Chairs, Brian McDonald and Susan Cantor.
Hi, I'll be doing the report this evening. The Operations Committee met on March 9th at 8:00 AM. In open session, we did, we got an update on our referendum on efforts that the district will be making and looking at our playgrounds. We just, we received a report from the tech department on looking at their Wi Fi and also infrastructure needs that they will be recommending to keep our district safe and keep all of our technical levels at the right amount. We discussed sustainability as we always do in each meeting. We had a very successful World Cafe led again by Valerie Orak. And community members got together to discuss and give recommendations to the district. Matt Matt Balding, of course, was there, so he's leading our our team toward making those changes. Matt, Ms. Balding also presented on the new RFP that he issued for the roof referendums and the bond issuance that also has taken place since we last met. We welcome the public to the open portions of our meeting. And please note that we're going to have a change in our date. Our next meeting will be April 21st at 8:00 AM, which will be reflected in the calendar tomorrow.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Susan. And given that it's 8:14, we'll we'll pause those committee reports here. And I'll just say, I just wanted to thank Mark Freda, who's the mayor of Princeton and the Princeton Council members for their flexibility tonight. There were two very important meetings tonight and are working together with our colleagues on the council. We're able to ensure that everyone is able to attend portions of the meeting that are of interest to them. And so I would just ask that this conversation is going to be for 15 minutes. And then, Dr. Foster, if you wanted to start and just comment about how this is something we will continue to be doing and then. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and we will keep it short because we are going to be returning and giving updates as we go along because we're just beginning this process. So as Dr. Two knows, one of the most important responsibilities in this seat is to review, realign and assess current curriculum. And by current curriculum, just a large definition is the totality of learning experiences of students. So that means the written, the taught and the lived experience. And that's our job to continually look at it. It's an ongoing cyclical process. And so with some internal audit from 2021, it is now time to take a look at our middle school math curriculum. And I am working with Stephanie Tidwell, who is also leading the charge with this. We have just begun this process, so I want everyone to know we organized a committee because we thought it was really important to have outside parent voices as well as educational staff members apart of the committee to take a look at our current middle school scope and sequence, collect some perception data, some, take a look at our student data that exists and determine how we might maximize student opportunities for all of our students in middle school math. So Stephanie, I'm going to ask you if you want to just share your screen and we'll quickly walk through Dr. Milo's outline and we'll go from there.
Thank you, everyone. And actually, we are going to first. Screen is not moving. We're going to look at the purpose of tonight and that is just to give you a brief snapshot of where we've come from and where we're going, along with describing some of the highlights from the review and then also speaking a little bit about the purpose and goals of the curriculum committee. So our journey starts really in 2019 when there was a district informed decision to change our sixth grade math curriculum from a tracked program to pre-algebra accelerated for all. At the same time, this was also the year that we were launching new textbook series in grades six through eight. That was the Envision Series. In 2020, we had Dr. Milo actually in district working with our K through five teachers on their implementation of educational technology. And at the time, we recognized that there had not been a transition or a discussion as to how we would proceed with the math program for students who were in the new program, algebra accelerated. And so our internal review was phase one of our review where he actually reviewed our curriculum, which I will discuss on the next slide. And 2021, in the spring, Dr. Milo actually presented his report on the review. And in the fall of this year, he has been working with us to look at our implementation of our Envision Series and also our instructional practices around his math review. So just a reminder that in 2020 of December, there was actually a talk with me and actually Elizabeth Collier interviewed me to talk about the goals of the math program. And at that time, the goals of the math program were conversations that I'd had with teachers, parents and students regarding the lack of math pathways for students at the end of their high school career. And so at that time, there was a decision made that we would do and undertake this review of the curriculum from gate grades kindergarten through 12th grade, which we did. And the first phase of the math review, we were just looking at the sequencing of our courses and how well we are covering the standards in all of our curriculums, K through 12. We particularly wanted to focus on since the transition was fifth through sixth grade with accelerated pre-algebra for all to see how that was actually working for us and also to see how movement from sixth grade without having done any additional movement of the seventh grade curriculums or eighth grade curriculums, how our transition from middle to high school was actually happening. The actual process of creating the review, the committee rather, is so that we have a goal of looking at our tracking policies in grades six through seven for the upcoming year and deciding on the process of how we will function as a committee for eighth grade and the year following. In high school math, the longer term goal is, as I said, we are looking at how we can offer multiple pathways for students so that they will have more opportunities for mathematics, not less opportunities for mathematics. So we are looking to expand our math program. The analysis from Dr. Milo, and I will give a few key points of his findings. He first introduced not just the committee, but in his review, which he's met with the SAC Committee, several board members and administrators to talk about the different components of curriculum. He looked at our ideal or intended curriculum, which is our written curriculum in Rubicon. He also looked at our implement implementation of the textbook and our curriculum materials. And he now is in district looking at our instruction and how we implement the curriculum as relates to the instruction. We are also set to look at our tested curriculum and then also look at data in terms of how we're actually achieving based upon that. What he identified is that we should be looking at the ideal curriculum as the big picture. But when he looks at our curriculum, we have these pockets of curriculum that I identified curriculums that are not in alignment. And so the goal of the committee and the goal of our work in district is to make sure that we can have better alignment between the different parts of curriculum. What we identified in 2019 is that we detract sixth grade math. We created this heterogeneous program for pre-algebra accelerated. However, we did no reevaluation of our seventh and eighth grade mathematics program to see what we needed to make changes in going forward. So right now, we have a coursework that looks at Algebra One, Algebra Two Acceleration, and then several part year Algebra One classes between seventh and eighth grade. If you give me a moment, this is actually what our course sequence looks like currently at the middle school. So we have a group of students who are entering sixth grade and pre-algebra accelerated, a portion of students who go back into a tracking because you're either then into Algebra One Accelerated or you're put into the part year classes. Dr. Milo did discuss with us our decisions about how we decide who accelerates. We did not. We did not, excuse me. We looked at the fact that the process should be collaborative, made by not just the department, but also our guidance department and understood by members of the community. Thus, that is also part of the reason for the math committee. What we found is that even though we have students who are enrolled in some high school courses at the eighth grade, at the time, there was geometry and algebra two. There's a lack of cohesiveness between sixth and seventh grade and that we should revisit some of these practices. Dr. Milo stated that many school districts often skip seventh and eighth grade mathematics to rush students to algebra in a race to calculus and that that is misguided and we need to be very conscious of our decisions as we look at adding any new courses to our pathways. He also stated that acceleration does not mean that we encourage selected students to take the same coursework. And it can happen in one or very rare cases, two more years ahead, but that we need to ensure that there are no critical concepts that are rushed or skipped. He also brought us to the fact of remembering the Nation at Risk Report in 1983 that talked highly about creating equity and high quality schooling and dismantling tracking. But 40 years later, he reminded us that we still in Princeton see tracking in our math program. Some of the consequences that he found through reviewing our curriculum were that because of the way that we have situated math in the middle school, we have several three plus tracks of classes at the high school that are leading towards calculus. And also that the district offers multiple tracks of algebra, geometry and algebra two geared towards culminating in calculus. Currently, if you were look at our high school curriculum from students and I apologize for the picture, it's been copied so many times that it's kind of blurred. But if you look at students moving from eighth grade based upon what we identified as the classes in eighth grade from the middle school based upon our sixth grade math program, you have basically this part in the road where we have students who are on one particular track and students who are geared towards another particular track. Through our discussions with Dr. Milo, the option was that we have an enter another possible destination. And the coursework that he suggested was that we look at having numerous tracks in our 11th grade that would lead to other opportunities in the 12th grade. I'll note that while this slide may show ninth and 10th grade because we would be looking at high school courses, this would be what we would see in our program of studies. It does not mean that we don't have students in our middle schools that may be taking some of these courses prior to entering the high school. And so really, the discussion that will be happening in the committee is that part in the road can be satisfied by looking at creating additional pathways so that there are students who may not necessarily have a high interest, let's say, in the higher sciences. But we have pathways and math programs that meet their needs and also meet their interests. And that's the goal of what we are trying to do as relates to looking at our actual mathematics program. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak at this time.
Thank you, Stephanie. So as you can see, the course, we're not taking away anything, but we are looking to add another more pathways for students. And the way we do that is to start with taking a look at our middle school curriculum as it stands. We will post, I know, I guess it's some of the slides may have been a bit blurry. We will post this presentation online for everyone to see. And we will continue to come and talk through our next steps as our committee continues to work together.
Okay, I just, I wanted to thank Ms. Tidwell and Dr. Foster for their ability to pull this together so quickly. And just the message that we were trying to send is we're not looking to take anything away. We're looking to add pathways. So we appreciate the community's engagement in this math issue. Math is very important to all of us. We we're very proud of what we offer in our district and how we address student needs. And we just want to make sure we're being comprehensive in addressing student needs. So Ms. Tidwell, Dr. Foster, thank you very much, and we look forward to additional updates. Dr. Foster, I'd also like to add that you will also be, I don't know if you wanted to speak briefly about the focus group?
Oh, yes. Yes, thank you. So to, we have a selection of parents and staff members on our current math committee, but we all, and we did send out a thought exchange to get some feedback from community members, but we also recognize that there are lots of people who, you know, highly value and want to contribute to, you know, to the math process. And so I had spoken with a group of people and I will be running some focus groups with some community members. So, you know, I'm happy to do that. And if anyone wants to email, you know, we will organize those so that we we can have your voice in this process as we, you know, work to realign.
Okay, thank you. Rob?
Dr. Foster, thanks so much. Just a quick, I'll call it an obvious question from where I sit. Are you, as the curriculum changes in the middle school in Princeton, clearly that's going to be not always aligned with the curriculum here in Cranberry. So are you kind of hand in hand or are you in communication with with our curriculum heads? Liz Grimaldi and Shana Weber as we're putting this together?
We absolutely will be. We have not yet because we've just begun. We've only started, you know, we had our first meeting on last Monday, a week ago. But yeah, absolutely. I think that's important. We also know that we, you know, we have Princeton Charter School and other, you know, schools that come enter our high school. So we'll make sure that we are working collaboratively. Thanks for that, Rob.
Absolutely. Thanks so much.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. We have public comment later in this meeting. And again, you know, it's 8:30. I promised the mayor, I would ask everyone who was at the other meeting to go back. But of course, we love having you here, so you're welcome to stay. And with that, we'll go back to our agenda and that would be the Start Strong presentation. So Dr. Foster, I'll turn it over to you again. Thank you.
This is, it's actually wonderful to read because we're really focused on student learning throughout. And so this is also great because this information feeds directly into some of our conversations around math and ELA and science. So I'm going to turn the presentation over to Maridola. Those of you that know her know that Maridola wears many hats in the district. And so she is the K-12 Science Supervisor. But in addition to that, she is also the District Testing Coordinator as well as the Professional Development Director as well. So she is going to take the lead on the presentation and I want to thank her. She has spent an enormous amount of time sifting through the data and for the presentation tonight. And then she's also going to be joined by two of our supervisors. Stephanie Tidwell, you've heard from, she will talk about the math. And Keisha Smith Carrington will be talking a little bit about the English Language Arts. So, Maridola?
Thank you, Dr. Foster. Matt, are you sharing the screen or should I share mine?
I think you can.
You're good to go.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I know this is long overdue, but we are finally here to share with you the results of the Fall 2021 Start Strong Assessments. The Start Strong Assessments were designed to provide districts with a data point on the level of support a student may need in grade level content and were based on a subset of prioritized prior year academic standards. Students were assessed in ELA grades four through 10, math grades four through eight, Algebra One, Geometry and Algebra Two, and in Science grades six, nine and 12. Each test contained about 10 questions and were administered in 45 to 60 minutes blocks. Three performance levels were utilized to report the results. Strong, some and less support may be needed. Because the test design was so different from the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments or the NJSLA, the districts were strongly advised not to make comparisons or inferences with either the NJSLA or any state level data. This report is divided into two sections, the district analysis and the demographic analysis. We're going to start with the district analysis first. This first slide contains the data for the ELA assessments for the district. A total of 1,908 students sat for the assessments and 74% of them were assessed as needing less support, while 12% were identified as needing strong support. The same information can be seen in a bar chart over here. The green bars, they represent less support may be needed. The yellow stands for some support may be needed and the red is strong support may be needed. We are obviously looking for the longer green bars in all our data. The next slide is for our math assessments. For math, we had a total of 1,836 students who sat for the assessments and 52% of them were assessed as needing less support, while 24% were identified as needing strong support. Again, we have the bar chart. Again, looking for green as less support while red stands for strong support may be needed. My next slide over here is for science. A total of 713 students in grade six, nine and 12 sat for the assessments and 50% of them were assessed as needing less support, while 16% were identified as needing strong support. And again, we have the bar chart over here. Moving on to the second section, which is the demographic analysis. The first slide depicts the grade band and all grades performance data by subgroup race for ELA. And it is easier to look at the bar graph rather than all those numbers on that table. So this graph, this slide represents the ELA by subgroup race. Our next slide is for math and again, I'm going to just skip to the bar chart, which is easier to see. As you can see over here in math, our black and Hispanic student populations, they are, the the green is not where we would like it to be. We see a similar situation for science also. Our black and Hispanic students, you know, the the students who need strong support is the number of students who need strong support is more than the number of students who need or identified as needing less support. The next, next we analyze the data by subgroup gender. And the first slide is for ELA. I am pleased to say that our female students are doing better. In math, it is approximately same. And for science, again, the females are slightly leading. Moving on to the next slide, which is by subgroup program. Five oh four. Free and reduced lunch, special ed, ELL and gen ed. For ELA, the data indicates that students in the free and reduced lunch as well as our English language learners require more support. Moving on to math, again, subgroup program. For math, free and reduced lunch, ELLs and special ed students required more support. And we see the same picture for science. The key takeaways from our analysis is are that the results of the Start Strong Assessment mirror historical trends in New Jersey standardized assessment data. And the observations from Start Strong Assessment are consistent with national pandemic era observations which which state that unfinished learning may be greater in math than in reading may be greater for elementary students than for older students. And for historically underserved student populations, the gaps continue to persist. Our district's focus has always been on providing a physically and socially, emotionally, culturally safe, secure, equitable and responsive environment for all, as well as provide support for students and increase teacher capacity in the area of instruction. This focus has been reinforced and reaffirmed due to the circumstances of the past two years. And keeping these at the forefront, the district has designed its recovery intervention and acceleration strategies. Professional development for staff has and is being provided on trauma-informed practices, executive functioning skills, equitable teaching and learning practices, and student-centered and problem-based learning, to name a few. Summer programs like extended school year and bridge programs were offered during the summer of 2021 and are being planned for the summer of 2022. The SR funds are being utilized to provide teacher support via PD on multiple key topics, expanded learning opportunities, mental health supports, as well as purchase of technology like the old cameras. I'm going to now invite Ms. Smith Carrington to talk about the next steps for English Language Arts.
So thank you, Maridola. One of the things that we are working to do internally is to really drill down in the data in order to see which specific areas are in need of additional support. And so it's important to also know that the assessments let us know which of the standards from the previous year each of the students had strengthened. And that was demonstrated with teachers being able to see each specific question that was asked and the answers that the students responded with, which is not the typical pattern for state assessment. So because of resources like that, we were able to determine that the professional development that's been started since the summer of 20 would need to continue and grow regarding strengthening teachers' abilities to reflect meaningfully on what their students' needs are based on getting to know their students and also being able to strengthen their pedagogy. And this is not just for all students, but especially for our students who are from historically and culturally marginalized populations. In fourth and fifth grade, there's been a lot of support for differential, I'm sorry, differentiated professional development through ongoing embedded coaching cycles. And so our achievement coaches have been partnering with teachers in order to support them in looking at the data and being able to do what is necessary in order to not only teach some new units of study, but also be able to increase the amount of differentiation in their classroom instruction. In addition to that, there's been a focus on small group instruction. And I do want to point out, even though it says fourth and fifth grade, because of course, we're talking specifically related to the tested grades, this has been happening from grades K through five at the elementary levels. And a lot of that staff development, looking at small group instruction is being led by our staff developers from Teachers College Reading and Writing Project. In the middle grades, we also have support from Teachers College. In addition to that, we have been using Common Lit, which is also aligned to the standards. And it allows the teachers to be able to see in specific tested standards how students are progressing. And so and we, in the middle of the year, we did a second benchmark, so teachers were able to see how they're so teachers were able to see how their students are growing, which is powerful data that we have not had prior to this year. We've also been able to use another assessment called Reading Plus, and that's a whole program that provides additional support and is also a tool that teachers can use during pause time at the middle school so that students who are in need of focused instruction at the middle grade level are able to have that. In ninth through 12th grade, there has been an expansion of the PHS Intervention and Credit Recovery System, and that has now included Saturdays. And there's also been summer instruction by the high school ELA teachers. In addition, there were some changes in the English Plus course in order to increase enrollment and make sure that more students are having the skills that need support addressed during the school year. And now Stephanie, well, we'll go into math.
Thank you, Ms. Smith Carrington. And so as we've looked at the Start Strong this year, we looked at using the assessment for the purpose of driving instruction, being that the assessments were a look at student performance last year to see mastery of major standards for the grade level. We incorporated not just looking at our curriculum review for cohesiveness, but we aligned the prior knowledge standards to our current year units of study in our grades K through five specifically. Over the summer, we took the time to establish prior knowledge assessments, also to establish common assessments and benchmark assessments that will give teachers the ability to identify student performance in prior knowledge standards before teaching current grade level standards. We provided PD on actual prior knowledge checks and common unit assessments in grades K through five. And then we implemented the Start Strong Assessments, the data we're looking at right now. We also approved our Lincoln pilot, which gave us the opportunity to establish having a data source in grades K, excuse me, grades two through algebra two for the, this school year. And so we will be administering actually another assessment, district benchmark, so that we can look at student growth during the course of the school year at the actual grade level. For instructional supports at the middle school, we have the pause program for all of our middle school students in mathematics. And then at the high school, we continue to offer our plus classes.
Thank you, Mr. Tidwell. And now I'll put on my science supervisor hat and talk about the science program, next steps in science. The science department is focused on disaggregating the data, not just the Start Strong, but you know, multiple data, and using it to design individualized supports for students. We are offering bridge programs in biology and chemistry, and teachers are also being provided with professional development on co-teaching strategies as well as student-centered, problem-based learning strategies. In fact, one of the classrooms was that the Deputy Secretary of the US Department of Education visited today was one where the teacher is undergoing training on problem-based learning. And even though we were interrupted with the, you know, the fire alarm going on, she was surprised to see that the learning continued even outside while we were waiting for the fire marshal to clear the building. So I, I am very proud of the work being done in the science department regarding turning our pedagogy from teacher-centered to student-centered, giving students the voice and the choice that is so necessary, and teaching them the 21st century skills of problem solving so that they can, they are able to, you know, any, whenever they are, they, they can tackle any challenge or problem that they encounter in life, not just in the classroom, but in life. So we are talking about workplace readiness skills. We are also working on redesigning the curriculum to include more authentic and equitable learning experiences for our students. We have also designed a new science pathway specifically for our ESL students in order to ensure that we, you know, support them in the science and, and while they are learning the vocabulary, which is necessary for, for science. I'm putting back my assessment supervisor hat again, and finishing off with the last slide, which is wrapping up, just summarizing what our key district priorities are. If, the priorities are improving student achievement at all grade levels for all students. We also are prioritizing identifying, addressing and decreasing achievement gaps where they exist, continuing to develop curriculum that develops the whole child. You know, like I said earlier, the developing the whole child, ensuring that we are giving them the workplace readiness skills, ensuring that they develop those critical thinking skills using evidence-based social emotional practices in all grades aligned to the most current New Jersey student learning standards, utilizing qualitative and quantitative data to ensure we know our students and how to meet their diverse needs, ensuring equity and access for all. And lastly, strategically utilizing resources, including but not limited to staff, time and funding to support district goals.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Ms. Tidwell, Ms. Smith Carrington, Ms. Baja for that very comprehensive report, and, and we appreciate your care for all kids. We, we know that, you know, the pandemic affected kids, and this just shows, you know, to what extent. And I just want to know if there's any, Michelle, board questions, and we'll start with Michelle.
Actually, it's, it's more of a comment, and, and I just want to, to acknowledge that I, I love the support and investment in, in instruction. I, you know, a lot of times we approach these, these conversations, and we talked about this a lot in Equity last year, about how we come from a deficit mode and looking at the kids as opposed to what it is that, that we're, we're doing in the classroom. And so I want to commend you all on progressing in this way, and I'm really, I'm really excited about it. So thanks a lot for the really thorough presentation.
Etty?
And I'll just reiterate what I said in student achievement, that we are in, still in budget season. Please be bold. If, I know, Matt, cover your ears. But if you have requests for what we can do from a budget perspective as a board to support the students who need the most support right now, we're really open to that. So we have another month, but thanks very much for the presentation and all your work.
Thank you. Can I just say one thing? Definitely, I'd like to correct the pronunciation of my name. It's Bajaj.
I apologize.
Thank you.
Okay. And with that, we will move on to item I one, the annual audit review. And before I turn that over to Mr. Bolden, I just wanted to say that the district has discovered some internal irregularities in our purchasing department. Although we've addressed the issues to the extent known, we have appointed an independent auditor who will be reviewing our policies and internal processes and providing guidance on any necessary revisions to prevent a recurrence of the issue and ensure that taxpayer funds are being managed with utmost integrity. At this point, we can't share any more information on the genesis of this issue, but we will, we will do so when it's allowable and appropriate. And with that, Mr. Bolden, I shall turn it over to you for I one.
Thank you very much. So I'll touch first on the financial results on the CAFR. We did have our current auditor Wiss in with closed session with operations on March 9th, I believe it was. And, you know, as kind of continued from the previous year, COVID has kind of left us with, you know, an excess of revenues over expenditures again. And we did spend some more of our capital reserve funds as we've gone over. The HVAC system at the pool was replaced, which was close to $1 million. And we did complete some more work that was left off of the 2018 referendum with some HVAC. We repaired a part of the high school shingle roof on the backside of the slate, which was down to the bare plywood. So we did accomplish a lot of things financially. You know, we added a little over $2 million. And then, of course, as I just talked about, spent a little of that on capital reserve as Board President Kendall just referred to. There are, so you will see more findings this year on the agenda tonight is the acceptance of the audit. And then when we do have findings, it is required that we put forth, is required that I put forth a corrective action plan related to those findings. There are really two main reports each year. They've changed the name of the, to the annual comprehensive financial report. It used to be CAFR, now it's ACFR. And there's the Auditor's Management Report, which focuses on management findings. So I'll go over them briefly. We do have a lot of things on the agenda tonight, but they are, the number of findings, which is five, which does not make me happy, of course, is directly related to what Board President Kendall was referring to. We do have, we were written up for having more than a year of outstanding reconciling items. When you do bank reconciliations, typically the vast majority of those are outstanding checks. It is best practice to make sure that they don't exceed a year. We have had in the past this, but it was written up this year, and I think it's important. To me, the biggest potential problem with this is that if you have too many outstanding items, you could potentially cloud your financial, the reconciliation of the bank accounts, which is of course extremely important as that's where irregularities could occur. Second finding here was during the auditors testing and transactions over the Corona Relief Fund, which is really actually this item was related to the, the state. Everyone's been using the federal funds, so some of the non-public funds were actually reclassified to a federal expenditure. There was an item which did not qualify for purchase under that grant. The third finding was the item that Board President Kendall was referring to, potential misappropriation of funds relating to expenditures of non-public state aid. So we are, have directly, I have directly improved controls with our staff internally and make to help ensure that that doesn't happen in the future. And there is an external review that is ongoing. The fourth finding was related to a school food, scoo, I'm speaking too quickly. The school, National School Lunch Program, let's just call it that. We're not allowed to keep more than three months on hand. I think that most districts in the state have had this probably across the country, even pre this year, where there was free lunch for all students. We have accumulated an excess of funds. We were laughing last week at the county BA meeting that we have once a month that, yeah, well, we have this excess and we can buy equipment that we need to replace. However, we can do a purchase order, we're just not going to get it for 18 to 24 weeks. So we are making a concerted effort to improve. So National School Lunch Program funds can only be used to improve certain areas related to delivering food services. We are going to change the line at the high school, but we had consultants come out about two months ago, and I was over there myself, and it was going to be impossible to get the work done this summer. So we'll have to wait till the next summer to do that important work. And the final finding I'll talk about briefly is also related to the School for Food Service Fund. Each year, you are required as a school district to do exactly a 3% verification, which means that 3% of our population that is on free and reduced lunch is essentially verified or audited. We reach out to those, it was four people in this case. And the evidence of that being done was not found. I do know it was done as I spoke with the person who did it. We couldn't find the records. The person no more works here. Of course, we will not allow that to happen. The work papers, I've reviewed them this year for the current year. This was related to the prior year verification. And so that's a summary of the five items. The corrective action plan is on the agenda tonight. And we are going out for an RFP in the very near future for an auditor, a new auditor for our fiscal 23, fiscal 22 financial audit.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Bolden. Any questions from the board? No, okay. We will move on now to item J, public forum, public comment on agenda items and non-agenda items. I would just ask that you, just respectful of everyone's time and try to keep your comments to three minutes or more. The board is not allowed to discuss personal matters of any kind. And just please be civil in your comments. So, Mr. Bolden, do we have any?
Yes, Bowen.
Hi, my name is Bowen Zen. I have two kids in PPS. I would like to welcome Dr. Tu to our community. You may get lots of emails from the parents. Okay, so yesterday, an email signed by 46 PPS parents was sent to the BOE asking for transparency on the process of mass reform. It's much appreciated that you heard our voice and you arranged for a special section for providing an update. I'd like to take this opportunity to reiterate our request. First of all, we ask you to release Dr. Milo's report, not just the key points, to the public immediately. Two, make public the criteria for selecting the math committee members, the names and backgrounds of the current members. Three, expand the math committee to include parents and teachers from all grade levels and not just limiting it to the fifth and sixth grade parents. Four, make public all the meeting minutes, but of course, without personal information. Fifth, send the surveys to all the parents and teachers in the district and not just limiting it to the fifth and sixth grade parents. Lastly, we ask you to provide an email address that's accessible to all math committee members for them to listen to the parents and teachers and inform the public of the email address immediately when available. That's all. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Akron? Hello, D Akron?
It might not be able to unmute, Matt.
We'll move to the next question. There you go.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. Did you have a question? I'm sorry, your hand was raised. Did you?
I know, I'm sorry, I, I hit the wrong button, but everything has been informative this evening thus far. Thank you.
Understand. Thank you. Jin?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, thank you, Ms. Foster and Ms. Tidwell for their presentation. I, first, I just have a clarifying question. When Ms. Tidwell says there's nothing going to be changed to the existing curricula, and you are just going to add a new pathway, but then in the slide, it just shows a new, new possible pathway where the, the three possible pathways are totally different or existing ones. I want to get a clarification that are we actually still keeping the existing tracks? Are we still going to have the accelerated algebra one and algebra two and possibly geometry in the middle school curriculum? Yeah, so that's, that's some comes there. Another comment I have is that, so I have a seventh grade daughter in the middle school. I noticed that the math abilities of all the seventh grade students, they, they have really I noticed that the math abilities of all the seventh grade students, they have really a wide range. I was told that some students are still struggling with multiplication. Which they are supposed to master before the middle school. I think this is a really serious problem. And our school district should put this as a top priority to improve this situation. And this needs to be fixed at the elementary school level. It's too late to wait until sixth grade. Because by that time, there are already a big portion of the students knowing the materials very well. So it becomes very easy for the disadvantaged students to lose confidence and interest. So any efforts at the upper school level would be ineffective. So as a summary, I think our math committee should really focus on how to get one hundred percent of our students ready for the pre-algebra course before they're graduating from the elementary school. That's my major comment here. I'll leave the time for the other. Yeah, thank you.
So this usually isn't a Q and A, but Dr. Foster or Ms. Tidwell, can you just confirm that come September? The classes at Princeton Middle School will be unchanged at, that's the plan at this current time?
Stephanie, I'll be happy to answer if you, yes, that is the plan at this time.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Ryan, Bob?
Hi, thank you. I'd like to comment on the district's ongoing review of the math curriculum. So in February, Dr. Foster emailed the parents in the Princeton Public School community, soliciting them to join the math committee. And as she explained in that email, the district commission, Dr. Eric Milo, took up an audit of the district's math program that was completed in May twenty twenty-one with a list of recommendations. She further explained in that email that the math committee was formed to review Dr. Milo's recommendations. As you might have been able to gather from Ms. Tidwell's presentation. Dr. Milo evidently has recommended that Princeton Public Schools detract its math curriculum through tenth grade. Including by removing Algebra One from the middle school curriculum and removing the standard calculus courses from the high school curriculum. I have many substantive concerns about those reforms, but in my brief time, I want to focus on process. So first, the process lacks transparency. Dr. Milo's study, which was completed over ten months ago, has not been shared with the Princeton community. I've been in touch with members of the math committee to inquire about the reforms being considered. And I've been informed that the district has asked the committee to keep all information and discussions confidential. As well, this evening, Dr. Foster and Ms. Tidwell claimed that the math committee is not considering taking away opportunities from anyone. Yet they acknowledge that first, Dr. Milo has recommended detracking and taking away opportunities from students, for example, calculus in the high school. And second, the math committee has been formed to consider those very recommendations. This lack of transparency in a process to consider such dramatic reforms is deeply troubling. Second, in part due to that lack of transparency, the process is also failing to gather broad input from stakeholders. There are only four parents on the committee. What's more, those parents have been told to keep the committee's work confidential and not discuss it with other parents. Third, the timing of the process is also problematic. Dr. Milo's audit of the district's math program was completed back in May twenty twenty-one. The first math committee meeting was not until just last week, ten months later. In her email about the math committee, Dr. Foster explained that the math committee would meet only twice per month. And further that, and I quote, "We anticipate that committee members will be ready to present recommendations by the end of April." So that any changes can be put in place for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. This belies Dr. Foster's characterization this evening of the process as in its early stages. Now I would invite you, Dr. Foster, to clarify that. The process the district is following here is particularly disconcerting, given the extreme reforms being considered. Which would gut advanced math education for Princeton Public School students. And which, to my knowledge, have never been adopted by any school district in the state of New Jersey. I respectfully ask that the board exercise its oversight responsibility and take charge to reset this process. Specifically, I ask that the board direct the district to disclose Dr. Milo's study to the Princeton community. Second, the board should explicitly direct the administration to adopt a more deliberate process of policy development that would take place over the course of the next twelve months, not the next four weeks. And seek input from a much broader set of stakeholders. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jane Manners.
Hi, thanks so much for the opportunity to speak and thank you for, for all of the very clear presentations tonight. I really appreciate them and I appreciate all the work that the committee is doing. I am also, not surprisingly, talking about the math curriculum. I wanted to kind of echo some of Zhang's questions earlier. First, I was also struck by the timing of Dr. Milo's report. Because it seems to me that we detract the sixth grade math curriculum. And then everything went crazy because of COVID and we had remote learning and people were in school for like two hours a week. And then Dr. Milo was doing his report and then we get the results of Dr. Milo's report. And it seems to me impossible to, you know, to the extent that Dr. Milo is looking at the results of the sixth grade detracking project. To disaggregate what was the result of detracking, what was the result of COVID, what was the result of stresses at home, what was the result of remote learning? So I'm a little curious to hear more about how that, what the data is, how it's being processed. I have heard anecdotally that the sixth grade detracking is working tremendously well. That kids are still able to pursue accelerated tracks and they're in the same classroom with kids who are on a kind of more standardized track and that they're helping each other, all of the things that, you know, we hope for in terms of equitable results when we talk about detracking. Differentiation in the classroom combined with kind of equity rise, you know, a lift, a rising tide lifting all boats, et cetera. So, so, so the question one is just kind of on the, on the timing of the study and the, and the data that's going in. I also wanted to kind of clarify, get some clarity on, on the statements today that, you know, we're not planning on taking anything away, which is great. And I applaud that. But I'm wondering if this is, you know, we're not going to take away multivariable calculus at the high school. But we are going to change the middle school curriculum such that if you go to Princeton Middle School, it will be kind of hard for you to get to multivariable calculus in high school. Unless you get extra tutoring or go to school in the summer, or all the things that lots of privileged parents in Princeton will do. If they feel like their kids are going to have opportunities denied to them at the high school. And I, I worry about this both because the, you know, I think you can all see where I'm going with this. If you start denying opportunities to kids in the middle school, there will be kids whose parents ensure they get those opportunities one way or the other, but those are not the kids who most need help, right? These are kids who have all the advantages anyway, because their parents are kind of getting involved with their education, et cetera, et cetera. And all that will do is in the end kind of exacerbate inequity, right? So I think we need to, as we pursue equity and excellence, we need to level up, not level down. And maybe we do that through pouring more resources into instruction, helping the teachers kind of differentiate in the classroom. Even with even more agility, giving them more resources, like all the things that people have been talking about in their comments, that the consultant has been talking about and kind of the whole curricular review. And I want to urge kind of that as a solution, kind of pouring resources into middle schools or elementary schools in improving math education. Rather than kind of doing something that will result in taking away opportunities, which will in the end only affect kind of the, the, you know, least advantaged students. So that's, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon DeVito.
Hi, I'm from Robbinsville. And I just want to let you all know that how delighted I am that you've chosen Dr. Two. But I can speak for a myriad of parents to say that we were all very, very sad to see her go. But happy for Kim that she's moving on to greener pastures. And from listening this evening, it sounds like she's entered into an excellent school district. That's focused on equity, diversity and inclusion. And I'd like to congratulate your board and your superintendent for the steps that you're taking in that direction. And Ms. Kim, I will miss you, but all the best to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jill North.
Hi, yes, thanks. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. I also wanted to speak to the audit of the math curriculum. And I wanted to express concern about two things. First, I wanted to echo the thoughts of others about that there's been a call for greater transparency, especially for parents. I appreciate the presentation today. Thank you very much. But I do think parents would really like to get their hands on Dr. Milo's report. The second thing I wanted to express concern about is that the change is being considered to the math curriculum. I'm concerned that they will exacerbate a different kind of inequity, which is the ability of girls to major in STEM fields in college and to continue on in science and math careers. So assuming the district follows the advice of Dr. Milo, the envisioned changes would eliminate the opportunity for girls coming out of Princeton Middle School to take the calculus classes being offered at the high school, if not eliminate those classes altogether. I realize you've said that you do not plan to take anything away, but the slide from Dr. Milo shows what he calls the calculus pathway culminating in pre-calculus, before calculus. So not culminating in calculus at the high school level. But without those calculus classes in high school, it's impossible to major in a STEM field in college without a lot of catch-up work. And committing to that requires the kind of confidence in one's ability to succeed when starting out so far behind that adolescent girls in particular often lack. So from my own experience, my own physics major in college would have been horrendous without the strong calculus background I had in high school. I would have had to complete an entire year of math courses just to fulfill the prerequisites for the physics major. I think that Princeton Public Schools should be in the business of supporting, not thwarting, the efforts of girls to succeed in male-dominated STEM fields. Thank you.
Thank you. Hongwei.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to let me speak. My name is Hongwei. I have a boy attending sixth grade at Princeton Middle School. Just want to add a few comments on the mass reform. I think it was a good step that the mass committee leveraged the short exchange to collect feedback from some fifth and sixth grade parents. However, this mass reform will have a significant impact to most, if not all of the current and future student. So I know for sure that many, many parents in other grades from elementary school to high school also have a strong interest to know what is going on. And wants to have the opportunity to share their pain points and weigh in on the future mass strategy. If you read the all the thoughts in the survey, I can tell that the common concerns are around the differentiation and transparency. So I think the mass committee probably should set up meetings that open to parents. And share the audit findings, just like the other parents stated before. And share the selection criteria of the mass committee members. And share the top rated source collected from short exchange. Also share the plans, how to address the issues. I believe the public meeting can help provide transparency. Foster a inclusive environment and create effective strategy to address different needs. Which will benefit our children and our school district in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan Pillow.
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to speak also about the math reform issue. I'm a professor of neuroscience at Princeton University. And I actually started out as a math major. I was a product of the public schools in Arizona. My parents were librarians. I had no outside tutoring access, but I did have access to a good public school that went through AP Calculus in high school. And that, that really springboarded me to, to majoring in math and a lifelong love of math, which took me to using math to study the brain in my research to this day. And so I just wanted to say that I'm not sure what's being proposed exactly, since the night they said that there would, nothing would be taken away. I just want to emphasize that I hope there won't be any reduction in pathways that allow students to take calculus in high school. So I'm really grateful for the, the public education system that I was able to benefit from. And I hope those same opportunities will be available for all children in Princeton. Thank you.
Thank you. Eleanor Hubbard.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thanks for the, the time to speak. I would also like to express my deep concern about the math curriculum proposal that was presented today. I found it to be extremely confusing because on the one hand, we were reassured that nothing would be taken away and that new pathways would be added. But we were also shown slides suggesting that algebra would be moved to the high school and that the most rigorous high school math pathway would terminate in pre-calculus. I don't know which to believe. We've just been reassured that classes will remain the same next fall, but not that they will remain the same thereafter. I'm deeply concerned that if they are put in place, these changes will restrict opportunities to take calculus to students whose parents can afford outside instruction. And also who have the ability and know-how to get them accelerated in a difficult and opaque process that is designed to be accessible only to those who are quote unquote truly exceptional. Girls and poorer students with interest in math and science could be severely disadvantaged. Both in terms of, you know, learning math, getting into college and succeeding when they get there. While it's possible to succeed in math and science at college without taking advanced courses in high school, it is much, much more challenging. Taking calculus in a big college class from a disaffected graduate student is different from learning from a high school teacher who knows your name and cares about you as a person. In addition, college students who need to spend their early years taking introductory math courses often require more time to graduate at a heavy cost. They may need to give up other opportunities and are much more likely to struggle academically. If the reforms suggested by the slides are put in place, they will put our students, especially our poorer students and our girls, at a disadvantage compared to those in private schools and neighboring districts. I would much rather see Princeton pursue equity in math by strengthening its weak elementary school math curriculum. So that all students will be prepared for a challenging curriculum in middle school. Thank you.
Thank you. Ying.
Hello. Yes, I was had trouble unmute myself. Good evening, everyone. This is Ying. I think a lot of you probably know me. I'm a parent of a seventh grader. And I'm also, my day job is I'm a faculty member at NYU Steinhar of Culture, Education and Human Development. And I study access and equity issues in the urban education setting. So I'm deeply interested in access and equity. I'm also, I want to say, I want to also say hi to Dr. Two and welcome to this district. I want to introduce myself. I'm, a lot of you know that I'm advocate of Asian American Pacific Islander students inclusion. I belong to advocacy group that we just recently pushed the a new, new law in New Jersey that mandates the inclusion of AAPI curriculum. So I, I, me and representing our organization make us visible in New Jersey and we look forward to working with you on the AAPI curriculum inclusion in this district. And tonight I want to also speak on a little bit about this, some of our district decisions and the process from, from the Asian American parents' perspective. We know that at Princeton, we have twenty-five percent of Asian American students plus a good percentage of a mixed race student. My daughter is mixed race. However, when we talk about equity and we often feel that Asian American students and families' voices are not being included. And perhaps just because as Dr. Burjat showed, right, Asian American student tests hide. So that their, their interests shouldn't be, should be, not should be considered with, treated sensitively. I want to mention a couple of things, just remind everybody about Asian American student situation, the intersectionality that we sometimes overlook. So one issue is about this model minority myth. In the United States, Asian American students, Asian Americans are often portrayed as, and treated as good working bees. And this just literally resulting in narrow career pathways for them. What does that mean? If you look at our high school students, Asian American students, a lot of them choose to major in STEM field. Because that's the only safe way for them to think about. because that's the only safe way for them to think about to make a career advancement. As a matter of fact, right, if we look at tonight in this meeting of all the people who have faces, I mean, I'm speaking here faceless because with everybody sit there with with a camera on, right? We have Dr. Bajat, who's Asian American. And also we have a student representative, right? And other than that, there are no representations of Asian Americans. And which says something about the career pathways that are available to our students when they grow up. So here I've just when when we talked about mass curriculum, I feel like we have to treat this subject more sensitively. And I myself overheard a lot of parents feeling hurt because they feel like they're being discriminated or at least not being treated with respect or sensitivity about their situations. Because if we also talk about when when the kids are applying for college, oftentimes Asian American students are not viewed as having adequate leadership so that when they choose to apply majors that's not in the STEM, they're being viewed in unfit, not non-favorably. Right? Another thing I want to also mention about families in this community, although they test high, but those families are, most of them are recent immigrants coming from countries like China, India, like myself. I came to this country with $200 in my pocket, two suitcase. When I grew up, I it was I we grew up literally in poverty. I mean, I I know a lot of my friends growing up in hunger because when there's boys in family, there was not enough to eat. So those are families are not privileged family. They came, there's also because this, but perhaps those are a group of people are little selected because of the immigration act. Because you can only enter this country on the visa. That's tech technology on the high tech on the professional visa. So a lot of parents, immigrant families in this town are actually in the tech careers. So as a result, you see a lot of kids look, they're interested in STEM. So I feel like on mass curriculum, I actually really loved the different pathways. I think it's a great way, a smart way to do it. But I do hope the district will pay more attention and be sensitive when we think about diversity, equity issues and about Asian American families reality. And in particular, are all children are childrens, right? And you look at what students are interested. We need to to be treat everybody equally and think about them as, you know, real life human beings rather than statistics because you test very high, so you know, there's it's you're in another trouble.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Ying. We really appreciate, you know, your commitment to advocating and both at this meeting and the meet our last meeting as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Darius Cabal.
Good evening, everyone. We fairly new to the district. We just started school in September. I have a kid in the middle school and elementary school. So I'd like to go back to the upcoming spring break and the policy school has. We tried to get the answer from from the principal of elementary school. And also I contacted the last couple of weeks superintendent, Dr. Carol Kelly. I still didn't get any answer to my questions. And my question is, how do we decide policies about traveling? My kid was kicked out of the school three weeks ago because he traveled to Florida. And he came to school, we tested him, but because he's not vaccinated, he was expelled from school. First, they told him seven days and then tested, come back to school with negative test, oh, five days. My question is, how did we decide on those policies? Because I talked last week to CDC's, I talked to New Jersey Department of Health, I talked to Princeton Department of Health. And everything is based on recommendations. The recommendations are when you travel outside abroad of the country, also to different states, they recommending to stay home for five days. This is recommendations. So when I asked CDC for about a recommendation, they cannot reinforce the recommendation, they only recommending this. So sending the perfectly healthy kid to school because he's not vaccinated, he was expelled from school for five days. Vaccinated kid can come back to school knowing now after two years of dealing with COVID and knowing we have all the vaccinations, the vaccinated people, vaccinated kid, they can spread and contract the virus. So based on what my kid was discriminated and also we have a religious exemption in schools, based on what kind of rules my kid was expelled from school for five days and refused educations, I still never get the answer from anybody. And I wish I can talk to somebody about this in a future time. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Ji Zhang.
Hi, can can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Ji Zhang and my son is eighth grader. And actually, I have some comments regarding the math curriculum settings. Actually, from the presentation, I saw that Dr. Milo suggests to sort of split the pathway of calculus from separate from statistics. That's from my own experience, that's not a quite reasonable setup. Because to to learn statistics or AP statistic, you got to have some calculus background. Even, you know, for, by the way, I have a physics background bachelor and I have a PhD in economics. From my experience, no matter what you do in college, what you learn, you know, yeah, what what size, even the science major, economics or chemistry or biology, you will need calculus. It's not something like you can sort of, you know, learn the statistics without knowing anything about calculus. That's not going to happen. So my suggestion is give the students the the right to choose the right course for themselves or the parents. Okay, given their interest, not just set up a pathway, a fixed pathway for them. Because the pathway that's suggested by Dr. Milo may not be the reasonable one. That's my opinion. And from my own small own experience, separating statistics from calculus, that's not reasonable. That's all my comment.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Joshua Benowitz.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. I'm a parent of three students in the Princeton Public Schools and I applaud the board and the teams focus on quality for all the students, you know, not just having people race forward for the sake of racing forward. At the same time, I think it's really important that we provide opportunities for intellectual engagement and scholastic excellence for all of the students. And I was concerned that there was kind of an assumption that tracking was working against this, when I think it really can work for it in certain cases, when done right. It's not fair to assume that it's a bad thing based on a 40 year old political quote. And generally, I think we really need to take the politics out of these things. And I got particularly concerned about, you know, this when there was something very confusing in the presentation that shows a pathway that ends in pre-calculus as the most STEM intensive pathway. At the same time that we're hearing nothing is going to be lost. And I don't know how to reconcile those things, but it makes me concerned that there is a very fundamentalist alignment and that, you know, we need to do better. We owe our kids better than that. And I totally agree with the comments that, you know, strengthening the elementary curriculum so that all or as many as possible students can excel in the sixth grade pre-algebra is really saying it would be super valuable as a way to help all the students excel. Thanks for your listening.
Thank you.
There's one more comment, one more.
Kids, cider?
Cider is right. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thanks. I think the central issues are those that have already been already been raised. I think the direction that the auditor or review is heading is very concerning. And I would hope that the school board would exercise some oversight there. But I wanted to raise one other concern, which I care about, even though I don't think it's quite as central. And it's this, sometimes it's suggested that calculus shouldn't be a centerpiece of high school mathematics education because it's not practical in today's world of data science and statistics. And I mean, it was pointed out two comments ago, that's completely wrong, even on its own terms. Calculus is at the foundation of both of those fields. But my main point is just this, calculus has immense intrinsic intellectual importance. It's at the center of one of the greatest intellectual achievements in human history, Isaac Newton's mechanics and theory of gravitation. And it's a thing of beauty. So entirely apart from its practical role, which is as central today as it was in the 17th century, calculus deserves its place alongside the study of literature, history and science in developing fully educated minds. Thanks.
Thank you. Parker.
Yes, just following up on all the comments, the concerns about the the study in the math program. I would just like to, you know, underscore the presentation at the very beginning of this evening from performance fact that the the school district, I believe, has a has a commitment to the equity imperative, which which ensures, which guarantees equal outcomes for every student without exception. And so somehow we just, you know, I just ask that in the next steps that as as the school district tries to meet the needs of the concerns that were presented by parents by the community this evening, that they do so, that you do so with keeping in mind the the commitment to the equity imperative.
Thank you. Leo. Nian.
Hi, I'm Ling Nian. Hi, hi, everybody. I just wanted to make a statement. So I I'm a I'm a proud product of the New York City Public Schools. My father's family came to the US in the 1970s as war refugees from Vietnam. So I wanted to kind of stick biographically here. I grew up in a low income household. My father was unemployed, my mother worked as a cashier. But I was extremely fortunate to be in a school system that was deeply committed to my success. I was captain of my high school math team. I took multivariate calculus in high school. I'm a graduate of Harvard University. And and you know, the the opportunities I received as a young person that were math related were so important for me. They opened up so many doors for me, so many doors I didn't even understand at the time. And I just wanted to go on the record of of kind of just the saying how important that was and how how distressed I am, I guess, by the sometimes what appears to be a cavalier attitude towards the importance of math and providing opportunity to children. I also wanted to make a couple more statements, one about the importance of calculus and pursuing STEM careers. I'm an actuary and data scientist. Proponents of detracking like Dr. Milo often say that calculus is irrelevant in today's world. And I also want to say on the record here, that is objectively false. Calculus is absolutely critical, especially in data science careers more than anything else, I would say. I also want to say, I don't believe equity is a matter of everyone taking the exact same courses or obtaining the exact same outcomes. I think it means providing the best education possible for every single child in this district. And that the district should not define equity in a way that pits parents against each other or against the district. I think that's just not correct. So that was all that was all. Thank you for the time to speak today.
Thank you. I think I clicked on the. There was one person who wanted to speak and I think I might have unclicked them. Ling Ding.
Hello, everyone. Yeah, yeah, thank you for the opportunity. Actually, yeah, I'm representing, yeah, for my husband and he's working our dog right now. So, yeah, my husband graduated from mechanical and aerospace department in Princeton and he got a PhD here. And he really, really grateful because he had a really strong math foundation. So he would like to communicate with all of you. You know, we're always being really grateful for the Princeton Public School education. But for math is really the foundation nearly for everything. So please help those children to build up a solid math foundation so that will really help them to go far. And also, you know, we have a sixth grader and eighth grader, we have two girls. So for our eighth grader, we heard you're talking about for this coming September, the curriculum won't be changed, right? So I think, and you're also talking about alignment in all the curriculum for these years. So we totally agree. But but the thing is, can you just give us more clarification? Because I just feel like, you know, in our family, we may need to face some sort of alignment, you know, between my older one and my younger one. So, yeah, please, yeah, give us some clarification. Yeah, but yeah, that's hope. Thank you so much. Yeah, thanks for all the efforts.
Thank you. Jai. Subrahama.
Yes, hi, this is Jay Subramaniam. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I just want to echo a lot of what the other parents have said about the math curriculum, right? I'm a little bit shocked by some of the statements that have been made today, right? I think it's really important that there be a lot more transparency in terms of what's happening as taxpayers in this district. It's really important for us to understand any changes that are happening to the curriculum, especially since a lot of the parents here who are in Princeton, they're here because of the strong, right, the the strong basically schooling district that's here. Professionally, you know, I work in financial services, I work in data. And I can echo what others have said that math is foundational, right, for having a successful career. And I think it's important that you guys, you know, look at this more more holistically and make sure that, you know, what we're doing is to is to ensure that we can provide more options for, you know, for the students in terms of excelling in math, not making it less. So at the end of this, what I'd like to hear from the committee is a action plan, right? In terms of what are the things you guys are going to do to help us to understand that, you know, this is going to move in the right direction. Right now, it's not clear to me because there seems to be a lot of confusion from this conversation in terms of what I've heard. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Danielle Roman.
Hi, thank you. I'm I'm a product of the Princeton Public Schools up until my senior year. And I will say that first, just to reiterate the point, I think transparency is really important for maintaining trust between the school, the school board and the and the parents. But what I wanted to say was actually about the the math curriculum. So we were never tracked in in middle school. And I think what's really important in middle school is that everyone gets the best possible math education that they can. But in high school, I do believe that the calculus is extremely important. When I went to college, looking at classes, I was not a science major, but I considered taking freshman orgo. And first thing the professor did was put calculus up on the board, which I couldn't understand how those two things were linked. So I didn't take that class. But I did use calculus when I met my science requirements by taking physics. And when I went to graduate school in public policy and and took an economics class, it was full of calculus. So I really think you cannot remove calculus from the high school curriculum, even for someone like me who was a Russian major and not a scientist.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Student.
Yeah, hi, I'm Rajiv Shirdhpatu. I have two kids, one in middle school, one in high school. And thank you for the time and explaining what is being planned. But as others have echoed, so right now I'm really confused on what the direction the school district is taking right now. And I was hoping that the standards of the math education will increase, but it seems like taking out calculus is lowering the standards. And as the new edge technology and the new edge career are in AI, artificial intelligence, data sciences, which require more math than less. I'm hoping that the school district will think in that direction and enable all of our and enable all of our students to get to that level. So that they are, they are, when they get into the colleges, they are ready to take on math and other subjects which are at a next higher level and not go into the college and learn something that should have been taught to them in the uh, in the high school level. So I'm hoping that the district will consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have one more question from John Cheng. Uh, one one more public comment, and then we're going to move on to the agenda. And we'll have another opportunity for public comment towards the end of the meeting.
Hello, can you guys hear me? Hey, uh, my name is Jean Shaw. Thanks for giving me this opportunity. Uh, I am a physicist, I'm a physics nuclear uh, background. Uh, I'll be a faculty for almost twenty years. Uh, so I can tell you from a teaching perspective, I'll be teaching so many physics students, math students, a medical resident, physics resident. I can tell you math is a foundation of all the STEM majors, everything, everything. Uh, especially calculus. And uh, I think it's great and we should, as a major, as a great district in New Jersey, we should put provide kids with opportunities to learn advanced math, including calculus, maybe even others. I think maybe to certain degree, we need to add certain type of math, just for the kids who is interested. It's okay that maybe some other kids are not interested, but we should pl- provide those opportunities for everybody. Uh, I don't really like a pathway idea. Uh, kids at high schools, they are not defined. They have the whole world, whole different, all kinds of different opportunity aheads. We don't probably need to provide them a pathway. We need to provide opportunities for them to learn and grow, grow. Uh, so this, my only point, I mean, math is so important. I mean, quite a lot of major, uh, is you want me with maths. Maths is just a tool, it's a foundation. So that's the point I need to make from a teaching perspective.
Okay, thank you very much. And we appreciate everyone who took the time to comment uh, tonight on this important issue. We hear you. And again, no decisions have been made. No one is looking to take anything away. Please stay tuned and trust that uh, we will do what's in the best interest of kids, all kids. Um, and with that, we're going to move on to item K one harassment, intimidation, bullying. I believe that's part of the consent agenda. Is that right, Mr. Bolden?
Correct.
Um, item K two is an action item. Uh, did we want to do that now?
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion, please? Brian, second. Rob?
Sorry, Daphne Kendall?
Abstain?
Michelle Talk Ponder?
Yes.
Betsy Bagley?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Gene Durbin?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Robert Christopher?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, um, we're going to move on now to board committee reports. I believe we ended with operations. So we will now go to personnel with Chair Debbie Bronfeld.
Great, thank you. Hi, the Personnel Committee met on Thursday, March seventeenth. The committee discussed several job descriptions, certification paperwork, leave of absence, and our tenure review process. The committee also heard about the RISE Fellowship Grant that Princeton Public School received that will pay for a Princeton University student who is also a PHS graduate, who we who will create over the summer literature and information about restorative practices that will then be shared with the community and district. As I was reviewing our agenda for tonight's meeting, under retirements, there are seven employees listed. Together, these employees have worked in our district for a total of a hundred and twenty seven point five years. I just wanted to thank them for teaching and caring for all our students. Um, our next meeting will be in April, but it's closed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Debbie. And at this moment, I would just like to turn it over to Rebecca Gold for a few minutes. Uh, Rebecca wanted to highlight uh, something going on in the Human Resources Department. So Rebecca, please take it away.
Yes, thank you. Um, just wanted to go over very, very quickly the CJ Pride Job Fair was this week. Um, CJ Pride is the organization that has sixty two districts in the state of New Jersey. It stands for Central to Jersey Program for the Recruitment of Diverse Educators. Princeton was one of our founding members and one of the founders of the group. Um, wanted you to know that we had over five hundred candidates at the job fair. It was virtual. And with our team, our wonderful team of administrators that interviewed, we saw, um, we ended up seeing nineteen percent of the people, which is ninety one candidates, which is incredible in a three hour spread. Um, but it gets even a little bit better. Right now, it's very hard to find teachers and it's harder to even find teachers in very special areas. And so I want you to know that we saw two special ed candidates, six, six school counselors, three world language people, one biology, and two chemistry. And while that may seem like small numbers, when you start at zero for the last two years of not being able to find some of these people with asserts, it was wonderful. I just wanted to thank our team for interviewing. We we will now be doing follow up interviews or being done, trying to get candidates where we have openings. And thank the board and the community and most of, most of all, Dr. Kelly and our team. Uh, a great, great job. We had over fifteen administrators giving three hours of their time at night to interview. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca, for your leadership on this. It's really great. And thank you for taking the time to um, let the board know about this important work that you're doing. So thank you very much. We appreciate it. Okay, um, so the next committee report will be student achievement with Betsy.
Couldn't find the unmute button. Okay. Um, the Student Achievement Committee met on March sixteenth at um, eleven thirty AM. We started, we have a few items on the agenda for this evening for approval, a math business ed textbook approval. There were actually two textbooks, one for introduction to business, business ethics and a computer science textbook. So that's on the agenda for approval this evening. Um, another item on the agenda for approval is a new Saturday session for credit recovery for our Princeton High School students. That's a new initiative being rolled out this year to help students recover course credits due to class and daily absences. So we thank our team at Princeton High School for coming up with this um, unique way to help our students make up that time. Uh, there was an update we shared with the committee, the middle school math, uh, which we've talked about a lot this evening, that that committee that's been formed. I am the board representative on that committee, so I'm keeping the board updated and I welcome questions as well. Um, there, we had an update on the INRS program review that has been completed. We also discussed the Princeton School District calendar and the possible inclusion of the Lunar New Year as a holiday in future years. And then there are some field trip requests that are on today's agenda. We then went into closed session. Our next meeting is Wednesday, April sixth, open to the public at eleven thirty AM.
Okay, um, thank you very much, Betsy. Did I miss any committees? Just because we went out of order, I want to make sure I didn't miss anyone.
Just policy, Daphna. Um, and our, our next meeting is uh, is uh, April first, eight AM. And we will be uh, tackling a uh, plan to um, review the new uh, proof policy manual from Strauss S May as we convert our policies.
Right, well, thank you, Jean. It's not just policy. Policy is very important. It's one of our policy planning oversight. Policy is number one. Okay, all right, thank you, Jean. All right, and with that, we're going to move through um, the items on the consent agenda. The first one, please stop me. I have a TV show. Watch it ten. I'm just kidding. All right. Um, number M one retirements. Um, I just wanted to say um, congratulations to everyone retiring. And I wanted to point out Cindy Clausen, who's a bus driver, who's been here for twenty eight years. I had the privilege of being driven by Cindy. Um, and she's just a wonderful human being. And we've been so fortunate to have someone like her driving our kids. Um, for, you know, from the kids are cared for from the moment they're picked up to the moment they're dropped off. And also wanted to wish Sue Welsh um, a good retirement. Um, Sue is um, very instrumental in uh, helping um, you know, some of our uh, kids who don't know how to swim, swim in a very kind and compassionate way. So I wish her well. Um, I don't know if anyone else had anything to say? Not, no, okay. M two resignations. M three appointments. All right, well, uh, I think uh, Dr. Kelly mentioned um, um, Dr. Kimberly two will be joining, well, once the board approves, uh, has been uh, recommended as Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. And um, you know, I hope you still want to come here after this meeting. Um, if not, we understand. Um, but we'll be voting on that as well. Um, item um, M four transfer reassignments. M five, superior compensation. M six, leave of absence. M seven, substitute teachers, student placement. Uh, I just wanted to thank, um, we have some parents who um, have undergone the rigorous process to become substitute teachers. Uh, we know it hasn't been easy. It's required background check and fingerprints. And a lot of time, we're very grateful. There's, as we all know, there's a shortage of substitute teachers. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, okay, uh, item M eight personnel items. M nine curriculum and instruction. M ten, student services. M eleven, athletics. Okay, moving on, curriculum instruction and one, English Language Learner Three Year Plan. And two, NJ DOE uh, twenty two, twenty three preschool expansion. And three, textbook approval. And four, purchase of textbook and related materials. And five, purchase of textbook and related materials. And six, student day field trips. And seven, student overnight trips. And eight, Saturday course credit recovery. Okay, moving on to O one, student services. Uh, home instruction provider. O two, educational placement of students. Nope, hearing nothing, going on in the business. Uh, P one, financial reports. P two, fire and evacuation drills. P three, annual school district audit, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Um, what is that? P four, annual school district audit uh, management report. Uh, P five, change order authorization, PHS. P six, transportation agreement. P seven, registration travel agenda. P eight, emergence, emergent purchase above bill threshold. Uh, what is this? P nine, uh, acceptance of donation Princeton University. And I just wanted to say a few words. Um, we are very grateful to Princeton University for their generous grant of two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, which covers the cost of tents for our six schools this spring. Starting on April first, we will have the same tent configuration at all schools that we had had last fall, which except with the exception of Union Park, which has requested one fewer tent. Uh, as we know, the local health officer and school medical advisors have recommended installing tents to provide flexibility and to have outdoor spaces ready to use for classroom and extracurricular activities. The cost of these tents was an unfunded priority uh, COVID nineteen need in our district. So again, uh, we are very grateful to Princeton University for these funds, which will make it possible for PPS students to eat and study and play instruments outdoors. Um, flexibility is particularly helpful should, God forbid, COVID nineteen positivity rates rise again. And it's been very important for students who are vulnerable and or living with a vulnerable family member. Uh, the generous grant is on the agenda for approval. And thank you to Kristen Applegate and her team uh, in the Office of Community and Regional Affairs, who continue to be, who continue to be our outstanding community university partners. So thank you very much. Uh, item P ten, professional service appointment of Special Counsel Lennox Law and uh, P eleven bid authorization. Okay, now we'll move to the second public comment period on any topic. Mr. Bolden, do we have anyone here who would like to speak?
No. No.
No, no, okay. All right, and with that, Mr. Bolden, um, can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda? Brian, second. Debbie? Mr. Bolden, would you call the roll, please?
Daph- Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Michelle Talk Ponder?
Yes.
Betsy Bagley?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Gene Durbin?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Rob Christopher?
Yes.
That's your agenda passes.
Okay, well, now I'd like to be the first to officially welcome Dr. Two to the district. Um, and again, there's no bad, a board member asked me to tell you no backsies. So um, so you're I guess you're stuck with us now. We'll see.
I'm thrilled to join the team. Thank you so much, everyone. I'm really looking forward to it.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, thank you to everyone in the public who participated. Thank you again to um, the town council and the mayor for their flexibility tonight uh, so that we were able to um, serve the interests of all our constituents in a very unorthodox way. And uh, I don't know if anyone else has any comments from the board? No, all right, can I get a motion to adjourn? Rob, second. Jean, all in favor? All right, good night, everyone.
Night.